You got to see where six, okay. Good evening, welcome to the City of Ione Planning Commission meeting. It is six o'clock and I'm going to call the meeting to order and I invite everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag.
And so with that, Janice, let's go ahead and do a roll call.
Commissioner Fleety.
Here.
Commissioner Bowles.
Here.
Commissioner Caputo.
Here.
Vice Chairman Gifford.
Here.
And Chairman Herson Hoistka.
Here. And with that, we will call for an approval of the September 9th agenda. Do I have a first?
Motion.
Second.
And all in favor, aye, aye. And do we have, all we have on the consent calendar right now is an approval of the minutes from August 12th.
Maybe, maybe just a minute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So approved and we will just jump forward to opening up our public comment regarding any items not on the agenda today. And.
There's only five.
Okay.
Anyway, every few years, we have to go through an unnecessary exercise of looking at a bypass for the city of Ione. And if recently came across the copy of this contract from 2008. I don't know how many hundred thousand dollars the county and the city have spent in there. But either way, if you look, this is only a couple of pages of a 78-page document that is still on record up in up in the county offices, June 17, 2008, and let's just get to it. If you go down to paragraph H, it says, you know, after the 300th dwelling, which we hit several hundred dwellings ago, developer shall at its sole cost construct a two-lane interim bypass segment between the project from Shakely Lane from Castle Oaks Drive to Five Mile Drive. Never in all of these studies have anybody mentioned the fact that the developer has to pay for this and all of these studies have already been paid for by county money. Now, I understand from reading your minutes that your planner talked to ACTC and she was advised verbally that ACTC doesn't want to get involved with any big projects like the bypass. Well, that's all well and good, but this is amateur county and that is only a verbal agreement. And if you go on the website for ACTC, under the RTMF, Regional Transit Management Funds, you'll find that the Ione Wiris is still very much alive. So I want everybody here to understand, you can study it again if you want, that's up to you, you can waste all the money. But at the end of the day, it can't be paid for by taxpayer money, it has to be paid for by the developer that caused the problem. Can I answer any questions or respond to any comments?
When in the history of, that I know of, has a developer paid for anything?
My memory, not never.
Thank you.
But you know, like I say, Ione's been played for a sucker many times in the last two decades. Anything else?
Yeah, I have a question. Was there ever anything on really specifically what this is supposed to be? Because you can now drive all the way down Shakely to Five Mile Drive.
Oh, absolutely, but I believe a bypass entails truck traffic and that's what, that's what all of these studies are looking at. And I'm really kind of doubtful that my new neighbors over on Shakely Lane are going to appreciate a bunch of trucks going through their neighborhood, especially when they only built the road like 35, maybe 40 feet wide. If there's anybody parking on either side, you gotta kind of thread the needle. And you know, I don't think the developer would have gone belly up if he'd added another six feet to each side or, you know, you know.
Well, there was part of it that he took away.
Huh?
There was part of it that he took away.
That does not surprise me, again, we're Ione amateur.
That came up, but nobody took any action on it.
Yeah. Nobody took any action on it. That should really be part of our, part of our city motto, but that's just an opinion.
Are you, I'm sorry, are you saying that Shakely Lane should be open to truck traffic?
Not at all, not at all. I'm saying that this contract was ignored, they let them build the houses and now they're asking the public and the taxpayers to fund studies and new bypasses that go essentially, that end up within the in the ends, the endpoint of where this thing is designed to go. No, no, not at all, I do not want trucks, I don't want to see little kids run over, I don't, you know. Golfers, well, you know, we can kind of work around that, but you know, you've got a lot of kids on Shakely Lane now.
It's my understanding when the developer developed those projects, I live at Shakely Lane at the beginning near Pleasant Valley. My, the width of Shakely Lane where I live is considerably wider than the width of Shakely Lane at the other end of Shakely Lane, which is about 1.1 miles from my house. And I understand that the developers who put those houses in at that time purposely shrunk the street side so they could put additional houses in.
Oh, it doesn't, you know, doesn't surprise me at all. Like I say, you name it, I've sat and watched it and again, everybody stands and watches. And I'm sorry, but at some point in time, we have to become aware of the legal binding contracts that the city has signed. And you know, I'm sorry, but let's, let's be realistic. You do, yeah, the traffic on Main Street at times is very bad. Okay, but in the times that it has, there hasn't been one fatal. And I'm sorry, but at the end of the day, and Caltrans will argue with you, the people I used to work for, it took three fatalities before you, before they considered putting in a traffic light. And they regurgitated the, well, we copied Caltrans policy.
I'd like to copy CDC policy too.
Well, that's a whole other swamp that I don't really want to get into. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a question, obviously this, I'll cover later, and thank you, Mr. Scully, for your input. JTS, are there any remnants of JTS still around? And if so, who would have taken their place, who would you hand this off to?
And again, if you look in there, it's a 78-page contract and in there at least twice it names the people that end up either heirs or whatever, I can't remember offhand, illegal, but it says anybody that buys this property or this development is responsible for this.
Okay, so it's, it should have been passed, passed along to future owners or newer owners.
It's, it's, it does what we in Ione do best, we kick the can down the road and say, gee, we didn't know about it. And again, 78 pages, please go to the recorder's office and review it yourself. I didn't just pull this out of my ear, okay?
I have one question, I'm not sure who to ask this question, that sounds stupid, but I've been told that the best thing we could ever do is not call it a bypass, call it a truck route.
Well, you can do that, you can call it whatever you want, but it's still gonna be the same thing and you're.
You're, you're obviously it's the same thing, but apparently that term bypass is not very well received.
Well, you, like I said, I don't know that you as a city have the authority to designate a truck route. I believe that, you know, and I'm not sure about that, but I believe that has to be a Caltrans function.
It has to be designated as a Caltrans highway. I only worked for them 35 years, you are not going to get a a road that then pass, because like I said, that's in a floodplain. The original plans way back when, and I tried finding them, it was supposed to be like a bioduck. They had to raise the road in a half mile there because it's in the floodplain. The state, state is not gonna build a road that's in a floodplain. It's not gonna happen, they ain't gonna accept it. And you remember right, it was like $54 million to put that in. And I don't think any of this county's got the money, because the one in Sutter Creek was only 34 million, so. I just wanted you to know that, and they, you can't make a truck run off a state highway. This city cannot make that happen. And you got two of them here, thank you.
Any other comments at this time? And with that, we will close the public comments not related to the agenda and we will move on to opening item H, the public hearing for the conditional use permit for Hunt and Sons on 650 Hunter Lane. So with that, sorry Susan, I'm trying to get to my pages here. Yeah, so you are going to open up with our updated staff report?
Right, so included in your packet was a staff report detailing the project description and the conditions of approval, I'll go through this briefly for the public. This is a conditional use permit application for a 30,000 gallon distribution propane tank located at 650 Hunt and Sons. This is approximately 0.75 miles south of the downtown area. The Union Pacific Railroad tracks border the project site and it's right near the, it's right next to the Rail Explorers facility to the south with Howard Park across the highway from there. The general plan, and zoning is, is a special planning area and industrial park policy area. And it is zone industrial. It's industrial limited manufacturing zoning. According to the municipal code, the, so this project is allowed within the zoning with a conditional use permit. Regulatory compliance, I included this in, this is the update to your packet. I provided some information on how these propane tanks are regulated by the state and the county. Essentially, they have to go through a permitting process with the, with the county and that they're inspected every three years by the county as well. For this project, you have to make findings of approval to approve the project. The first one is that the proposed project is consistent with the general plan and all applicable provisions of the municipal code. And that the establishment, maintenance, or operation of the use applied for will not, under the circumstances of this particular case, be detrimental to the health, safety, peace, moral, comfort, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhoods of such use or the general welfare of the city. There are 11 conditions of approvals identified for this project, most of them came from the fire chief and I'll just quickly go through them, that the addresses shall be posted on the main gate. Access roadway shall be a minimum of 20 feet, the ground and surface area must meet compaction standards, all plumbing should be, shall have the required safeguards to prevent spark ignition and automatic shut offs. The area should be maintained clear and free of wildland fuels. The storage facilities shall be completely fenced and locked to prevent all non-employee access. The NFPA signage is required on all four points of the property. Only the main storage tank will be allowed to have products stored on site, all other tanks are to be kept empty and in areas marked empty. A minimum of 340 B.C. fire extinguishers shall be mounted in the site for access by personnel. The current fire hydrant system shall be extended within the two, within 200 feet of the driveway. And installation of the facility shall meet or exceed all the standard codes of the NFPA, Article 58, and that's the article, the fire standards that covers propane tanks and the California Fire Code, Article 61. This project did go under review in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act and does qualify as an exception in accordance with Section 15303 and Section 15404. As part of the environmental review process, we did, staff did circulate the application to responsible agencies. We did receive a comment letter from Caltrans. I did receive a response from the county, but there was nothing substantial. Staff did review those comments and determined that no additional conditions were necessary. So the action that you're being asked for to consider tonight is adopting Resolution Number 202503, approving the, the application as presented and instructing staff to file a notice of exemption. Should the Planning Commission choose not to approve that resolution, we can amend the resolution to be a denial resolution whereby the finding, all we'd need was these findings from the Planning Commission as to why you can't meet those findings that are in the municipal code. So are there any stations, questions to staff at this point?
Can you confirm for me again, what was the notice of exemption, that was the SEQA exemption? What was that for, the item number two?
Yes, yeah, the item number two is the, the notice of exemption in accordance with the California Environmental Quality Act. Sorry for that, I should have clarified there.
I did have a couple of other questions. Was anything like this also part of the approval program, which is a risk management program guidance for propane storage facilities over 10,000 pounds? This is with the U.S. EPA from March of 2009?
That might be best directed towards the fire chief.
Okay. Because some of my other questions were, who is responsible for maintaining those 11 conditions of approval, is it also our fire chief? Okay.
So I put on, at the end of each of those, who, which department is responsible for making sure those can, those are being.
Several of those were like an and/or, and so that was where I had questions, is that it feels like it's putting an onus on Chief Mackey to be personally overseeing the conditions of approval. And so my questions are related to who is the or? If there's an alternate and then what, there's no naming of anyone, it just says to, like for example, in item number six, you know, to the satisfaction of the fire chief and/or building official. And as we know from our previous city council meeting, we have a contract building engineer right now and we have some in-between status as to whether we're going to have someone in our salary schedule and whether that's a permanent position. And, and there was a lot of discussion about the cost savings of having that be a contracted role. And so I bring that up in relation to basically contracting out is how it appears to be these conditions of approval. Because we're listing an or building official in several of these. So that's where I was looking for some specification as to who exactly was going to be giving that approval.
So I listed either one of them because I believe either one could do that. If you want to make it specific to one, you can. I would recommend not putting in the individual name because that could change going forward. And some of these are ongoing conditions that, that the county is also, some of these are redundant with what the county is requiring. Their oversight, some of this is redundant with the county's oversight as well.
Only thing I could find where the county has ever issued any kind of approval for a propane distribution facility consisting of two 30,000 gallon propane, it was like 30 years ago. It was like July of 1995. So I was wondering that too, like where, where else is the protocol for these tanks being installed in Amador County, or is that it, is it from 30 years ago, from 95?
No, you have a tank that was approved on this road from, in 2008, that's the same size that the county oversees. So there is protocol for the industry, when they put in these tanks, that they have to log, they have to provide information to the state and there's a whole, there's a state site that they have to report to. And then that the county gets notified that they're, that they're doing this and then they become the oversight agency that.
The key portion of that being the county, and this is a request for the city to then take over, right? To take over that layer of oversight?
The county, the city and the county have an agreement to, that the county provides environmental health services to the cities in the county. So they have that oversight, not the city.
Okay.
In terms of the requirements through the state.
Right, okay, but then my question about the, the risk management program, it's not one that we can answer, it's something I should direct to Chief Mackey as.
Probably, I, I'm not familiar with that, I'm more familiar with the regulations that I had to review for, for this particular project. The fire, the, you know, the fire related ones.
This was specific to anything over 10,000 gallons and it was, it was related to basically analysis, a prevention program, emergency response program, none of which I, I saw listed in our conditions of approval. So that was why I found this document. You know, relevant, I guess I would say, so I just had questions about that out of the gate. And do we have our applicant here today?
I don't know.
Okay, so my, my question, if I may, is, so who is the customer of, of this as, as seen as it's a locked facility that is only accessed to employees? I'm wondering who's, who's the end user of these 30,000 gallons of propane?
Can you, can you come up to the podium so that the recording can catch you, sorry?
I'm Don Vicari, Business Development Manager for Hunt Propane. Also the general manager for the Ione and the Amador County. Hunt asked me to get a, an office somewhere in Amador County and the storage. And since I'm from Ione, I thought this would be the great place to do it. So the 30,000 gallons, I own Ace Hardware today. We just put in our 1,000 gallon tank there for the dispenser. So all the Ione Willow Creek Road, Comanche, Buena Vista, all those customers are ours, all through the county, Plaza Resort, everything in between. We're also going down to Slough House, Galt, Harold, anywhere in that area. So we needed a storage facility and talking to Rick, when, I do this throughout the state, throughout Nevada as well. And first thing you have to do is see if the zoning is right, and, and it is for this application. Then you have to get with the fire department and nothing gets done without their approval, so.
Right, but your permit was given almost a year ago and you're just coming before the commission today. So that's a, not necessarily your responsibility as the applicant, but it doesn't weigh favorably as to our processes that we have such an expired temporary permit. And I understand there's already extensive construction taking place for the pad, it is.
That's another falsehood. Also that it's a massive propane tank, I'd like to say, that's not true, that's a standard 30,000 gallon tank. There's no construction, the lot is made, we have a temporary tank, there now an 18,000 gallon temporary tank, approved, something else she misses, every year, the Department of Industrial Relations comes out the vessel and checks all of our tanks. And so that's another oversight, we're the most regulated industry probably in California. So there's no construction yet. You've seen the engineering plans, we have to put footings down, we've got engineering's a survey, surveyor and everything is, should be approved because that's, you know, the, the cement, we just don't go stick a 30,000 gallon tank there, it has to be engineered. And so that would be the next process, so whoever said that on Facebook or Iown Politics, they're wrong, they, they don't know what they're talking about. And trying to promote fear in the community that a massive propane, propane tanks coming in is just shouldn't happen, especially from people on the Planning Commission.
So you don't have customers going there?
No, no one goes in there, only us. And also the gate to Hunter Lane is usually closed unless the, the rail cars are, you know, customers going in there. But it's a lock gate there and then of course we're locked. We have a security fence, that's Department of Homeland, Homeland Security. Everything else that Kenny knows, NFPA, NPGA, the propane part, there's, there's so many things that we have to have right. And we get inspected, you know, from outside agencies, so.
I've seen your, I've seen your facility and it's as you've described it.
Yeah. Yeah, very, very expensive to do, we're doing one in Truckee, actually we just got approval today, which was, it was tough up there. And, but when you do things right and, you know, you jump through hoops to do whatever is needed, we want to be safe and good stewards of the environment, so that's what, that's what we did there, so, good news. And, and this is, this is beneficial to everyone on propane that's still hot, is in Ione, 95640. We don't charge delivery fees and we're, our price is less. We're, we're a corporation, but a small one, we're not owned by someone from Canada or Wilkes-Barre, Pennsylvania, you know, we're right here.
Right, but Willow Creek and all of that, that doesn't, I think when I had read a previous grand jury report, there was something like six propane tanks in the city of Ione, so it's not, it's not an obvious, you know, we need to service the city of Ione by planting a propane tank, you know, a quarter of a mile away, so.
Not at all, but I had the option and since I grew up here, we got the office right down Main Street. We donated, what's the latest, Native Sons Golf Tournament, Homecoming, the Christmas decoration. Actually, Homecoming, we got second place, so my office manager is mad, but, but we donated the money that we want, I think 150 bucks back to the, back to the city.
So it'll be more than.
We want to get it next year and then we'll keep it, maybe, but.
Well, and I think we have a little bit of a, a different perspective on what, you know, I certainly am aware of the zoning out there, it's a, it's a limited manufacturing, it's intended for commercial space and office development. And so I, again, it was not exactly a leap for me to make the case that industrial storage of propane was, you know, the intended use of that, of that zoning. With that being said, what does that do for the surrounding area as far as that future development opportunity? Are we affecting anything by facilitating or being asked to facilitate that as a heavy industrial area?
It's allowed within the.
For storage, yes.
Storage within, with a conditional use permit. Does it preclude other uses, is that what you're asking?
Well, I'm asking for like an impact because we've already had some discussion about the requirements that are set up in order to create a, I guess, a, a site, a pad that would accept this kind of property. Obviously it's, it's Crest property, you know, they can, they can lease it however they so choose. But my question is with this being, you know, the zoning of this, as I read it, is that it's intended for commercial space development of, of that. And so it seems like we are, we are really leaning into making this, you know, a storage facility site is what, what you're telling me with the meeting the zoning requirement. So I'm just asking, what's the impact of that?
It doesn't preclude any of the other uses that are listed in that zone from occurring, which includes those listed in, that you just mentioned. So it doesn't preclude any of that from happening in the future on the other sites available out there.
That's correct.
And the uses out there now are, to me, they're sort of in line with this. You have Mr. Creth not just on this side, you have US Mines on the other side.
Well, US Mine is a different, it's a, it's a different zoning, correct?
We do have a.
I'm just saying it's in the general area for this type of a use.
It is, and we do have a precedence. So you already have tanks out there for storage within a hundred feet. So we've already got a precedence for doing it. Would seem that we would be a little bit hypocritical to not do it.
Unless you have a crystal ball and you know what's going to be coming. I, I can't see how this is, has anything to do with, with them and what they're trying to do. Really don't.
I think if we, with all due respect, if we're waiting for somebody to build offices out there, we're going to have a long wait.
A question, Mr. Vicari. The, I, I think I know the answer, but this is, no way will be retail, strictly industrial distribution of, of propane. Okay.
The site's not, not intended to be open to the public and the hours of operation are 7:00 AM to 3:00 PM.
Right, it's an employee access is my understanding, that you're using it to refill your propane tanks and then deliver those tanks to other parts of Amador County. You're basically looking to use it as a filling station.
Correct.
Yeah, I, I agree with other commissioners. I mean, this is an industrial area with an industrial application. What are we waiting on?
Well, I think again, my concern is more about what the conditions of approval are because I believe this is something like 75,000 pounds of liquid propane. Is that right? It's about like three quarters of a mile from the Ione Junior High? Give or take, across from our regional park where we're investing seven figures.
And then another field. I, I think so. Yeah, it's probably, actually it's probably farther away than the camps.
The crow flies?
Tank, yeah, that's, that's been there.
It's about the same distance I measured it from the far end of the football field to where this tank is, from where we sit here now to the cemetery.
Yeah, I, I've seen it. There's, in my opinion, there's, there's no danger to the community or for that matter, the schools. The distance is way too far for that.
You know, you know, if you're going to start bringing the, the D word, danger, you got two gas stations over here. They probably pump 40, $50,000 gallons each a month. That's 100,000 gallons of fuel, a couple of blocks from us, right? You know, you know, the, the trucks that, that George Reed's small oiler probably holds 1,000 gallons of, of fuel. Okay? You got Firecracker Dave, where do you think he gets all his supplies? They come right, right past this building.
Yeah, there was just a death at the underground tank at the Costco in Sacramento. So that stuff happens all the time. It was a third party company. They were trained. They were, you know, inspecting the tank and the guy's dead now. So sorry for asking some questions about the process when, like I said, we're already a year past an expired permit. So I'm just looking to make sure someone's asking some questions because apparently some things were overlooked in this process. So that's a, I think they were. I think that's why we pulled it and brought it back again, but.
This is all new. I don't see it was overlooked.
The 18,000 gallon tank was issued a, a 90 day permit in October. You were granted that approval. And so that's what I'm referring to about why it took so long to bring that into compliance from an expired application or expired permit and why it's now August before we're hearing it. I'm just looking to find out some information mainly from our staff. It's again, like I said, it wasn't your, I mean, I don't think it was your responsibility as an applicant to be monitoring compliance on those things. I think the two staff that we have are sitting right here. And I'm just, as I asked at the last meeting, what other permits do we have that fall into that category? I understood there were other ta, or other tanks that were being requested as well. So this wasn't just a one-off. This is something that is, is looking to be ministerial approvals for the city. And so these are the kind of things that it looks like are the way that our staff is going. So I'm just looking to.
If I could address that, and Don, this isn't for you, if you want to sit down for a minute, but.
I will.
And this really doesn't have anything to do with, with the merits of this, but I did have some questions on how we got here, how we are now. I think it was Halloween last year, a 30, or was it a 90 day permit was issued? At the meeting last month, I was, I asked a question about how did this come about with a temporary permit? And I hadn't really heard of that. Anyway, looking into it a little bit, glad we have a couple of city council members here today. Apparently in February of 2022, I believe it was, the city council passed this. It gave the city planner essentially power to grant temporary permits. And it lists, it starts listing like what they are. And it's for temporary permits for temporary things.
Temporary use.
And the things that it lists are like, well specifically, there's car washes, carnivals, yard sales, things like that. And I totally understand that. I mean, that shouldn't come before the planning commission. That's ridiculous. But then there's a paragraph under that that says, I'll paraphrase, I have it here, but. If the city planner thinks that anything else falls into that, she can do it. And it cites, I think it's title three, which is the whole, the whole zoning code. Under your discretion, if you think something falls within the zoning code, you, without informing us or anything else, can grant a temporary permit. And that's what happened here. And again, it's no reflection on Hunt Brothers or Mr. Vicari whatsoever. But it seems like this was never going to be or intended to be a temporary facility. And I'm, I'm just wondering, and it's like that got passed about three years ago. I didn't know anything about it. It was never mentioned, you know, to the planning commission. And it took away a whole lot of our powers. And I'm just really wondering how many of these have happened in the last three years? And if that has something to do with why we've had so few meetings?
This is the only temporary use permit that I've issued. The reason I issued it was because they were applying for a conditional use permit to do a larger tank. So this was like a trial run to see how it would work at this site. And yes, I should have probably extended it formally, but we were still working with the applicant actively on going through the CEQA process and getting responses from responsible agencies. That process by its very nature takes more than 90 days. So, and then in order to proceed with it, he needed, the applicant needed additional time to do engineering and respond to Caltrans letter. So yes, I should have formally extended it, but we were actively working with the applicant towards getting the conditional use permit application in front of the planning commission. And the understanding was that he was proceeding at his own risk with the knowledge that the planning commission could deny this application. And whatever work he's done to date as relates to the temporary use permit was on him.
I don't think that that's fair to them or to us. Yeah, I think that should have been renewed past the 90 days. But I really feel that, you know, for something of this magnitude, it should have come to us in the first place. I mean, when something, you know, happens quickly, Janice can say, you know, we can call quick meetings, you know, on whatever notice she has, and most of us are available. To me, this was an abuse of that code section that got passed three years ago unbeknownst to me and I think any of us here.
That's, that's probably true, but I don't think we should punish Hunt Company for that.
No.
That's, that's, that's our mistake. I, I can tell you, coming from the corporate America world, unlike city politics, things in corporate America, no matter how big they are, you think they go very smoothly, very quickly, they don't. They're just like city government. They, they have their nuances, things fall into cracks, their things forget to get done to cross the T or dot an I. But it doesn't change what you're trying to do as long as you're meeting the criteria to do it.
This just seems to me, and this is the last thing I'll say on this, it's like a ask for forgiveness instead of permission. And I can, you know, I mean, the way we're sitting here now, I'm, I'm not hearing anything otherwise and that we're going to, to grant this thing. And I think we would have done the same thing if this had come to us initially. And then for one, Hunt Brothers wouldn't have had to kind of have this thing hanging over their head. I just think it, it could have been handled a little differently and it would have been more efficient. And for us really to do what we're supposed to do, because now the thing's already there, basically, part of it. That's all.
Well said.
For the commissioners and this is Josh Verinsky for City Attorney. I, I understand there's some council members in the audience. I would recommend that we pause and all the council members should leave the room while the planning commission makes their decision.
Who's talking?
That's Josh Verinsky, the city attorney.
Oh, okay. You don't have to leave.
I got his memo. Everybody sees his memo today. Well, I'd just like to, being new to the, I'm sorry. Being new to this committee, although I'm not that new to, to Ione. It seems like what's happening here to the Hunt Brothers is systemic of what happens when people try and do things in this city and they run into so many obstacles to get it done that they don't want to do it here. We need that business in this city. We need that tax revenue. Who's, are we kidding ourselves that we don't? We ought to make doing things in this city a lot more user friendly than we do. And it goes back years that I've seen, because I've done a lot of research, did a little investigation of my own. And we have a serious problem getting things here because we make it tough.
You know, on, we've seen, we've, we've seen this city let developers get away with murder. And this little, this little hiccup, so again, asking for forgiveness after the fact. We need business here. This is the kind of stuff that's ruined California. Nitpicking and, and, and reading between the lines. And, and now I'm going to, now, now I'm going to go rampant on this. No, I'm not. I want to make a motion that we vote.
Sir, we are not done with our discussion. It's a hearing that has been opened. We're having board discussion. There's no time to make a motion at this point. We have a hearing that has to follow a, I know, it's, it's.
Is anybody, anybody going to get up and, we got any other speakers? Anybody?
We have not. We have not. So if everyone that is between staff and board and city attorneys have made their comment, then at this point, yes, we can go ahead and open up to public comment at this time.
Are we going to get any tax revenue off of this?
It's a good question. Is there any tax revenue? Because I'm hearing that this is a non-resale site in which there will be no retail activity and no sales tax generating the city at all beyond the revenue that is garnered for Hunt and Sense.
And they're not going to do the bill in here at all?
No, no.
But what, well, it's, it's saving money though for the people in the area of the county though.
No, I think there's six propane tanks in the city and I believe they're going to be making deliveries throughout the county.
That's right. What's wrong with that?
To Plazas and Slough House and Willow Creek Road.
I'll tell you another little secret. If you deny this tank, you can figure nobody else is going to come to Ione because this is going to be known all over. That don't come to Ione. It's already out there. I don't, you, you, you knew people don't know the old timers and know what, if everybody says in the county about Ione.
I remember this came up at the last city council meeting. You had almost the exact same comments. Thank you.
So every time somebody comes here and wants to do something, you guys give them, oh, you got to do this. Always one or two on any panel that for some reason don't like anybody doing anything. And all I can say is the people that don't like us making money and doing all this, they ought to just pack their bag and get the heck out of Ione. Because I get tired of these people on the Facebook. I mean, you read it, you know what they say, and they don't do their homework. Nobody went out there to look and see all the construction work that's supposed to be going on out there. That's just to upset people. You have to get over that. We have to, we have to let a business do something in this town. If you kill this project, I think you might as well just close the door and say, hell, this is it. Because then nobody else is going to come here. Probably even developers won't even come and build houses because you got, you, they're just a certain amount of people in this, on our committees that just doesn't want anybody to do anything. And the thing, what I'm saying is they're going to give fuel to people out of Comanche and everything. And those people shop in Ione and stuff, they'll be saving a little money because this fuel is cheaper, you know? And you're, I don't know, you, it's, it's ridiculous. Like I said, if you, if you don't pass this, because it isn't going to hurt nobody. I worked at Particle Board Plant and we had two great big tanks out there. I mean, giant tanks, they never hurt nobody. So I think if you deny this, you might as well just do away with the committees and hell with it because ain't nobody else going to come here.
Thanks, Andy.
I apologize. I didn't mean to comment, but three of you, I consider relatively recent arrivals. So I want to tap into the two of you that spent a little time here as kids. And like you say, you got to know where you've been to know where you're going. And I'd like to, everybody to remember that at the base of the Catholic Church, on the west side of the road, for the majority of my childhood, there was an absolutely huge propane tank there. And the laws and regulations were a lot looser. And then we even had clampers killing people across the street at the homecoming. And we never had a problem. So it was contained. This thing is away from people. Like I said, if you, you, you know, you're a good distance away from the, from the school kids, et cetera. I'm just saying, I don't see a problem with this project. Questions?
I'll just add on to that. Do you remember the three enormous fuel tanks right next to the high school? They were either 40 feet tall.
Oh, yeah. I, I didn't realize they were fueled for the, for the plant, but.
And when, I mean, Mike should remember, before we had natural gas, everybody in town had a big propane tank in their backyard.
Yeah, yeah.
Thanks, Jim.
Yeah, I mean, Ione is a natural gas town. I mean, that's just, again, the questions have to be asked because it's not like there's a plethora of propane tank users in the city.
I, I would like to bring up about what you just said three years ago. De novo was your planner then. And she ain't here no more. She up and just left one day. What's that all about? We never heard about it.
She retired.
I'd like to know what that was about.
She retired. April.
Yeah, retired. She retired right up to Wallyworld. She retired.
Ah, well, I know that De novo.
Six hundred and forty acres. She, she did the design on it and she's doing something over Plymouth too. So, yeah, she left for a reason and we don't know what it is. But that, that is what I wanted to bring up. That is, that's the problem. And we had at Caltrans, we had three fifteen thousand gallon tanks, three of them with oil. We used, they used to make the oil here and ship it everywhere. And people don't remember that, which you, Mr. Giffhart knows about them.
Remember as a kid climbing on top of them.
You know, you're the guy that probably opened the valve one time. I mean, that's six thousand gallons of oil spill all over.
You know, I'd like to, somebody clear this up about the taxes, the sales tax. The county, you delivered to the county and, and the people don't pay sales tax on the, on the propane?
If for heating, you can get an exemption and most people do for their, for their residences.
Okay, so there's absolutely no, no taxes, the, the sales tax collected?
We pay tax.
Right.
We pay tax on what we get.
You, okay, you pay tax.
Right. Mr. Krep, he rented the space down here.
On Main Street.
On Main Street, right there in the front. Donate to the community. We have giveaways. We did stuff with the elementary school giveaway Easter baskets. Planning on if it, if it, everything goes well, you know, at the homecoming, we want to be a good sponsor of that. I could, like I said, I could put the office anywhere and the storage. I had another place up in Jackson. But I, I grew up here. I wanted to have a here. Ione needs business, you know, as you said. You know, we're a, a good business. We're saving, maybe not Ione proper because there's no propane tanks. But the residents, nine, five, six, four, zero, Willow Creek Road, Buonavista, Comanche, we're getting all those accounts. I bring up Camps Propane because they've gone corporate now. They, the owner is, it's a Canadian company and the whole culture changes. Well, we're the old culture where we're going to give our hometown people a better price, better service. No delivery fees, none of that kind of crap.
Yeah.
And I'm, I'm able to do it here, like I said. And if things don't work out, I, I can change the office, move the office up to Jackson. They actually kind of wanted me up there anyway. But I wanted to be down here and be part of the community where I grew up.
Blackmail won't work.
Thank you. Is this your corporate headquarters?
No, it's about thirty miles away.
San Andreas? Or is that where it is?
No, Sacramento.
Oh, Sacramento. They know they have another office in San Andreas.
Hunt Propane, we're a separate entity of Hunt and Sons. They've been around since the nineteen forties. The propane.
Okay.
Probably about twenty years. So.
Same family?
Our report to one of the sons.
Okay, so we do have Hunt and Sons propane. So no, no comments on Zoom? Okay, so with the last of our comments, we'll go ahead and close the public hearing and it sounds like people are ready to make a motion and I think that's where we're at with the public hearing once the comments are closed.
I don't want to delay anything. I'd just like to correct one thing on the, the project site. It says Howard Park further to the south. Howard Park is northeast.
Sorry.
I mean, it's, doesn't matter, but get it straight.
Make it right. So I'd move that we go ahead and accept this project.
Second time. Get word out far ahead.
Aye.
Call for a vote. Okay, Commissioner Bowles?
Aye.
Mister.
Aye.
Aye.
No. So with that, there are four ayes to approve the conditional use permit, which is, let me read it. So it's official here. A resolution of the Planning Commission of the City of Ione approving a conditional use permit for a propane filling station at six fifty Hunter Lane. Resolution number PC twenty twenty five dash zero three. And I think that's the only thing we have on the agenda today.
I'd like to address item J under feature agenda items. I mean, I concern Mr., I agree with Mr. Scully's concern about this bypass that should have been dealt with by previous developers. I don't really know what to do about it, but I don't think we should ignore it indefinitely. I would like to put it on the agenda for November's meeting, which would give staff a couple of months to dig in and who do we go after and what do we say to them and see if they get any response. But I don't think we just want to wait until Mr. Scully shows up next year and says the same thing and the same points.
Well, I said last meeting, we need to start.
Well, we got to rattle a cage to see if there's anything there.
I think the very first thing would be to see if the contracts to the successors and interests still have that clause in there.
Right. But, but by just nodding our head and telling Mr. Scully, thank you, we're not moving there. I think we need to take a direction and, and get some answers to see where, where our resources are.
Can we do that?
I think that'd be a really good idea, and I think there should be a public hearing right after our discussion. And everybody on Shakely Lane needs to, everybody in, in the city needs to be aware of it.
I, I will remind the commission that that development agreement is an agreement between the developer, and I'm sure it's transferable if JTS is no longer the development party, and the city council. So I, I'm wondering if it's better sent to the city council because they're the ones that the agreement is with. It's not really a planning issue in the sense that you're not doing planning there. This is, this is enforcement.
Can we as a commission recommend it to, to the council?
Absolutely you can.
Then I, I suggest we do that.
There we go. We need a motion to do that, or can we just do it?
We provide direction to staff and staff is, who I would take it to is sitting right here, so.
Get on it, Mr.
Ask it to, ask it to be on a future council agenda to review the development agreement, the terms of the development agreement, and if there's, you know, things that are missing from being implemented.
I have one other question, and we talked about this last meeting because like I said, I've, I've seen our city zoning as a disaster and I know that it's being reviewed.
Understood.
Is there a committee to do that? Who, who's doing that?
I'm doing that.
That's a lot of big job.
Yeah.
One person.
Yes, do.
With a, with a, with a hundred opinions.
If, if this commission would like, if the chair of the commission would like to appoint an ad hoc committee to advise on some things that you feel need to be changed, that would be welcome. On staff.
I think that's a great idea.
Oh, I'm sorry.
At the same time, we need, we need economic development too, you know, a, 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 a good, a good plan on, on where you could have a welding shop or a mechanic shop or all that. We need the businesses to fill those spots that we're going to designate. And again.
Right on the main.
So let's discuss that at our November meeting. Let's discuss the ad hoc, because we've discussed the zoning several times over the last year. And we have yet to really have, this was probably the most comprehensive update and it was kind of like accidentally found about some of these gaps in the zoning. And one of those is actually what we discussed within the last maybe six or eight weeks, which is that there are in fact other areas which will be subject to ministerial approvals of eighteen to thirty thousand gallon propane tanks in wherever is zoned M one or M two right now within the city. And so I think something like that would be a good review for the commission is, is where, where we're intending to allow these ministerial approvals to take place. So.
So do you want to appoint an ad hoc committee?
Well, I think we should discuss it at our November meeting and have some follow up on some of these items because as I said, we've been discussing the zoning for probably the last year. So I think what we want to do in light of a special meeting being called at seven o'clock is continue this on to the November meeting where we can have some more discussion around the zoning specifically. And if that is the end of our timeline, we can go ahead and adjourn on that note. Thank you.
But I think you did an excellent job, again, get your.
My beef was really about the conditional use permit being granted and that I don't think it really belongs within the, the zoning. And so it, it kind of became like a food of poison.
Good, how you doing? Operator, do we extend it?
And just to. The temporary, because it was all going to be the place.
It's a sticky note on a calendar saying extend, extend, extend. It's not, nor, nor, nor.
So I just feel like it really of a poison tree, whereas the opportunity that happened, half discussion and for additional uses in the place were a year ago, not now. And so now, I mean, again, like I think at our last meeting, there was more discussion about if I saved. There's no. The only thing in there are the eleven items makes us really, the only little, the people are the eleven items for the agenda. There's no one added anything else.
Yeah, and I read the thing that Josh, the attorney sent out today and, and, you know, Dave, you know, I think four, but I mean, at that point, and I've learned over the years.
You know, we just make mistakes just like.
Then it's void because.
Right.
Okay, well, good job. Thank you.
For, for the for the city field or for the, the little field, right?
Yes, his wasn't free. The rancher's was free. His was not free. Right. No, I didn't know that either. Well, tell him, give him, give him sixty days, sixty days. I didn't know that either. Fully out of context.
You got to change names?
I remember when I put that vibrator in the door.
Just chit chat away down there.
Yeah, I was doing, sorry about that. Wasn't intentional.
I have enough three thirty because I have to go again tomorrow.
We get this moving.
To your seats, gentlemen.
Special meeting, it's only items. Take it off. They keep putting on, public matters not on the agenda, they're not on the agenda. That's not the case in a special meeting. It should only be.
Right.
Hey, George.
Wrong since day one.
Tell me when you're ready, Janice.
You recording?
Okay. I'd like to call the Tuesday, September ninth, twenty twenty five special council meeting to order. Janice, could you call a roll, please?
Here.
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 Here. Will you please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance? Can I get approval of the agenda?
Move to approve the agenda. Second.
First and second, all in favor say aye.
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 Both ayes have it. Public comment, any public comment items not on the agenda.
I apologize. I'm getting all caught up here.
There shouldn't be five copies of a part of a contract from two thousand eight that we're going to look at tonight, and I apologize for you doing that.
If we're here earlier, you're going to have to suffer through this again. Basically, I came across this recently. It's an amendment to a contract, June seventeenth, two thousand eight. If you go to the third page, section eight, or excuse me, H, highlighted for you, the developer shall at its sole cost construct a two lane interim bypass segment through the project from Shakely Lane to Castle Oaks Drive to Five Mile Drive. So just seems that every few years we come up with this, oh, we got to have a bypass. And okay, fine, but all of these studies have been funded at taxpayer funding and taxpayer money. And it says right in here in black and white that the developer is responsible for this. And it's just, it's gotten to the point where I, and I understand, you know, the traffic is bad at times on Main Street. But we all know that funding has to be, it has to be motivated for some reason. And the state, and these are state highways out here. So if you need, I hate to say it, but you're going to have to have some accidents, some fatalities, and you haven't had any that I can remember at all. So I'm just saying that this seems to come up, and while I understand the planning, the planner talked to the Amador County Transportation Commission and they said, well, we're not doing big projects right now forever. Again, that's a verbal thing, but if you go to ACTC's website, it's right on there under the Regional Traffic Mitigation Fund. So they're going to try and horn the taxpayer with a bypass on a state road. I don't even know if Ione has the ability to make a truck route or a, or, or a bypass and demand that a guy on a truck leave a state highway and go on their bypass. I'm not sure about that. I don't think so. Now, nobody wants to see, you know, I don't want to see a bypass go through the middle of Shakely Lane and all that. But in the years since then, nobody paid attention to this contract. They built a bunch of nice homes in there and now you don't have a lot of choice. Well, at the end of the day, now you want to route all that truck traffic out by me, which when you're paying almost five dollars a gallon for diesel, that's just not going to happen unless you have the legal authority to bring the hammer down. And you don't. So I'm just saying you have this contract that says the developer is, is responsible for building this thing. They didn't. Ione fell asleep at the wheel, whatever, whoever. There's plenty of blame to go around. But, you know, at the end of the day, and I appreciate the effort and the thought behind the planning commission when they're saying, oh, we'll have another committee and all that. You know, when you're standing over a dead body and he's got four or five large holes in him, there's nothing you can do. So you do nothing. And I'm sorry, but at this point, this bypass, there's nothing you can do. So don't make another, don't spend any more money making another study or, you know.
Another thirty seconds.
Okay, like I say, this is just what I'm saying. Don't spend a lot of money when it should have been spent by the contractor before. Can I answer any questions? Respond to any comments?
Yeah, I got a couple. First of all, the funding that's been going through ACTC has been paid by the developer because it was all impact fees. So there's number one. Number two, this is an interim bypass, not an ultimate bypass. And the interim bypass wasn't done, but there is this exact bypass right now. It's called Shakely Lane.
I wasn't done, but there is this exact bypass right now. It's called Shakely Lane. Um. I don't have a problem with revisiting whatever bypass the city wants to do. I'm not sold on any one alignment. But this is not what you're saying it is. This is not the bi- the bypass. This is just an interim bypass. While the project is being built and it's already been done.
I believe the project you're talking about is the weirdest and I don't remember the exact for the acronym, but one of those words is interim.
Time's up, Jim.
Any other questions?
No, thank you, Jim.
Any other items not on agenda?
Elmer Roadie, six twenty one Pleasant Valley Drive. I have a few questions for the council. Uh, what is the status of the purchase of a new property for the police station? I haven't heard whether it got approved, whether the. The estimate or the. Uh, figures came out right and we ended up doing the deal or not. I'd kind of like to know when, what happened on it. Secondly. Do we or do we not have a problem getting water for the tertiary plant? A lot of rumors are floating around and I just wish you guys would come up with an answer. Um, I, we previously had a thing and George says it's been handled, okay? Does that mean it's still been handled or do we have a problem again? You take a look at the updates in the Facebook and all the different pages there. Nobody, or everybody thinks there's something else going on, okay? These guys are out there working hard on that golf course, getting that thing changed, getting all the bunkers redone. I hope they've got water to keep the course going. Okay? Then. As far as I know. The ARSA agreement. Is between ARSA. The city of Ione and CDCR. I never recall that CDCR was dropped out of that program. Which means we should be taking CDCR water. For our tertiary plant. Now, if the tertiary plant cannot handle the current CDCR water. What is needed to be done to that tertiary plant? To make it handle the CDCR water. We've done a lot of changes. We put a lot of money into that thing. Let's get it finished. If we gotta do something more to that tertiary plant to make it handle CDCR water, let's get it done. I understand with Title twenty two, things have changed. Things are rotated around, but we've been putting CDCR water on that golf course. For many years. Okay, and I don't know of anybody dying of cancer out there. Okay? And what we've had, cancer in the city, and I understand we've had a few cases. But if you want to find out whether or not that tertiary water is bad. Do research on the people that worked on the golf course, the maintenance people. Go back and take a look at the records. So anyway. Just like to get some things done in this city for a change. With no bickering.
Dave Johnson, um, I just have basically, uh, uh, two things that. I wanted to try to see if we could get clarity. I don't know if Josh is on or not. It sounded like he was on earlier, but. Um, this is the fourth closed meeting that you guys have had and every one of them says like litigation. Um, I don't know, we've been sort of, you know, I'm one of the Facebook guys, okay, so I'm probably a bad guy because I'm asking questions and maybe we shouldn't ask questions, but. The way I read the Brown Act is it says even in closed session, you're supposed to tell us the topics. The citizens don't give up their rights. We just can't know what you guys are, are, what the negotiation is, but we're supposed to know the topic. So you, you're in your fourth one tonight that you have not disclosed what the topics are. And if Josh is on the call, there's a, uh, precedent, uh, Brown versus Lafayette where they did the same stuff. They didn't say what was in the closed session. They just put it on there and they never told the public what it is. So we're talking about these rumors, golf course. I saw somebody yesterday say one of the council members was getting sued. You guys create this when you don't try to be transparent and at least give us the topic. When we were talking about the golf course, it said. Negotiations with Han. You guys came out of the meetings and said, there's nothing to report. Great. At least we knew what it was. So. Like what we're talking about with the golf course. I live on the thirteenth hole. I can see it's going brown behind my house. So when people say there's rumors out there, I see it firsthand. It was a hundred degrees in July and it was green. Those guys are doing a hell of a job. Mowing it, maintaining it, but there are brown spots out there now. So to my mind, it's been, the weather's been a little bit cooler and we're not keeping up with it. So I tried to ask at the last meeting, like Justin was saying, he had to go back to the well. So the tertiary is not supporting it by himself. He's going back to the well and getting additional water, but I don't know that we ever got an answer. What does the golf course need in a hundred degree day for gallons? I, I know we said there's like three hundred and fifty or three hundred thousand coming from the well that he's adding to the tertiary and getting that over the golf course. And he was saying it was somewhere between eight hundred and eight hundred and fifty. I just don't know if that's enough to keep it green. And if it's another lawsuit pending. To your point, you know, the CDCR water is there. We should be using it. I'd, I'd hate to see us in another lawsuit. Um, but this is the fourth meeting and, um. I, the Brown Act says specifically, you guys can have a meeting within twenty four hours, but it says in a closed. Meeting, you still have to tell the public. Um, a description of what the topics were for that meeting. You can't just say pending lawsuit and just leave it at that. It ha- you have to give us at least the topic, uh, because you, it is, it's creating a whole bunch of crap on Facebook with people wondering what it is. And then stuff leaks out of here somehow that some council member is getting sued and there's votes on that. It, it's, it's just a little nuts. If you guys were a little more transparent, we wouldn't have that problem. So, uh, that's, that's that one. Uh, the other one, and I, I don't know if Josh is on there or not, but, um, a couple of meetings ago I brought up. Uh, that Jack had recused himself in the golf course conversation, but didn't have a problem, uh, voting in the tax for Castle Oaks. Um, I did a little more research and Jack, if I'm wrong, you can let me know, but the area you're in. You don't pay, you don't pay that additional fee that the rest of us pay. So if you were gonna go sell your house, you have nine hundred.
Got thirty seconds.
Thirty second, you have nine hundred dollars a year you're not paying. So over the course of a thirty year loan, that's twenty seven thousand dollars if you go to resell your house. That I can't do with my home because we're paying the higher taxes. So when Josh says there was no monetary gain, I disagree with that. So that's just my two cents. We don't have to answer anything, but that's what, that's what I saw.
I'm here as a resident, don't worry. Um, I just want to point out, there's a bunch of rumors going around and you guys hate them as much as I do and as much as they do. Rumors start somewhere. So which one of you is starting them? Because none of us should know what's going on in closed session or have any idea. So I'm looking at all of you. Which one's telling their good friend, oh, it's about water, but I can't say anything else? I just want to remind people rumors do start somewhere and we should not know. Remotely anything. In closed session. So you guys are. I'm looking at you. And. That's all I want to point out. Rumors about the city start somewhere. So let's start internally, right?
Thank you, Mia.
Mia.
Any other? Items non-closed session? Anyone zoom? Dennis? No, all right. We'll close public comment. Okay, we got one closed session item, conference with legal counsel, anticipated litigation.